Okay, good evening. This is the Selectmen's meeting of July 6th at 6:30 PM. In accordance with the Governor's order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting, General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 20 relating to the COVID-19 outbreak from urgency, the July 6th, 2020 public meeting of the Board of Selectmen shall be physically closed to the public to avoid group congregation. However, to view this meeting in progress, please go to the facebook.com/LakeCam. You don't need a Facebook page account to view the meeting. This meeting will be recorded and available at a later date at www.lakecom.tv. Okay. As a preliminary matter, this is Richard LaCamer, the Chairman of the Lakeville Board of Selectmen. Permit me to confirm that all members, staff, and persons anticipated on the agenda are present and can hear in. Members, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. State each member's name. We have, going across here, we have Brian Day, Selectman.
Here.
Lillian Fabian, Selectman.
Here.
Maureen Cadino, Town Administrator. We got Chief Matt Perkins.
Here.
And I thought we had Emily, but I don't know where Emily went, so.
She's there.
Oh, there you go. There's Emily, Sergeant. Oops, to be Sergeant Emily. All right. Okay. Good evening. This open meeting of the Lakeville Board of Selectmen is being conducted remotely with Governor Baker's executive order of March 12, 2020, due to current state of emergency in the Commonwealth due to the outbreak of COVID-19 virus. In order to mitigate the transmission of the COVID-19 virus, we have been advised and directed by the Commonwealth to suspend public meetings. As such, the Governor's order suspends the requirement of the open meeting law to have all meetings in a publicly accessible physical location. Further, all members of public bodies are allowed and encouraged to participate remotely. The order which you could find posted with the agenda material for this meeting allows public bodies to meet entirely remotely, so as long as reasonable public access is afforded, so the public can follow with the deliberations of the meeting. Ensuring the public access does not ensure public participation unless this participation is required by the law, this meeting will feature public comment on chat, Facebook. For this meeting, the Lakeville Board of Selectmen is convening by video conference via Zoom as posted on the town's website. Please note, this meeting is being recorded, that all attendants participating by video conference. Accordingly, please be aware that folks may be able to see you and take care not to screen share your computer. Anyone that you can broadcast may be captured by this recording. Meeting materials, all supporting materials has been provided by the members of this body are available at the town's website unless otherwise noted. The public is encouraged to follow along using the posted agenda unless no otherwise. Meeting ground rules, we're now turning to the first item on the agenda. Before we do so, permit me to cover some ground rules for effective and clear conduct of all business, ensure accurate meeting minutes. I will introduce each speaker on the agenda. After they conclude their remarks, the Chair will go down the line of members inviting each member by name to further provide any common questions or motions. Please hold your name. Please hold until your name is called further. Please remember to mute your phone or computer when you're not speaking. Please remember to speak clearly in a way that helps generate accurate minutes. So for any response, please wait until the Chair yields the floor to you and states your name before speaking. If the members wish to engage in gauky, they can. Other members, please do so through the Chair, taking care to identify yourself. Okay, we are gonna have public comments. Finally, each vote taken in the meeting will be conducted by roll calls. Also, is there anybody else recording the meeting? Okay, I guess we're all set. All right, the second thing on the agenda is the Selectmen's announcements. First of all, I'd like to thank everybody that, you know, helped us out, you know, for the town election and the town meeting, especially the town clerk and the town moderator and the town administrator and her staff, and the custodians, you know, at the high school. We were very fortunate that the election went very well, and there was a big turnout. There was over 1,200 people that turned up for the election, which was kind of a surprise, but they did. And at the annual town meeting, we had 161 people showed up, and we were anticipating less than 100. So that's great that everything went well. And also, oh, forgot, want to say LakeCam for all their help, you know, in setting up the meetings and doing the recordings and so forth. Okay, so the first announcement is that we have informed that Lillian Drain, our town clerk, has been working over the past seven years to complete the Master's Municipal Clerk Program of the International Institute of Municipal Clerks. She was notified on July 1st that she has fulfilled all the requirements of the program. And now, she is one of 24 out of 351 in the state of Massachusetts to be a Master Municipal Clerk, and we'd like to honor her and say thank you, Lillian, for a great job. I believe Maureen Lear, we have another announcement about the DPW Director, I know.
I have that if you don't mind. So Franklin Moniz, who is our DPW Director, was alerted of an award from NAPA, which is the National Asphalt Pavement Association, for the Perkins Street Cold and Place Project. He will be receiving an award and a letter for that project. For those of you that remember, that is the new way that we are being able to resurface some of our roads in town, and it cuts down significantly on the amount of environmental waste and time that goes into a repaving project. And for any of you that drive that road now, know how nice and smooth it is, and how nice and smooth it is a year after completion. We're very proud of the steps in the right direction that Franklin has taken, and has taken the Highway Department, and is able to continue to take the Highway Department. And we're very proud to announce that he has received this award. So that's great. It's great for the town, and it's great for the environment.
Yep, he's doing a great job, and as you probably seen recently, that Highland Road, you know, was just done, and Highland Road looks great. And next week, he's gonna be starting, I don't know, it's Freetown Street or Vaughan Street, one of those two. So those two roads will be paved in the next two weeks as well.
Rich, I just wanted to congratulate both of them too. Frank's doing just an incredible job, and Lillian too. I mean, Lillian has already, you know, she's no sooner closed her book on the election and town meeting, and she's already getting ready for the fall, the two fall elections. So my congratulations go to both of them as well. Really both hardworking. We're very lucky to have both of them.
If I may pile on, Mr. Chair, just to say the same thing. I mean, Lillian and Frank are probably two of the more humble department heads we have, so it's, you know, great to see them get recognition for their work and efforts. And I hope the rest of the employees, you know, will certainly take the time to recognize them as well for the things that they do. But thank you very much to Lillian and Frank for these steps forward. It's great.
Okay, I had a note here, Maureen, that you may have a couple of other announcements, no?
I have some new business and some old business too, so I'll go into them when you get there.
Okay, anybody else got any other announcements?
Nothing from me.
Okay.
No, sir.
Okay, so the first thing, the third thing on the agenda is to discuss the 43D permitting process for the former Lakeville Hospital property. And I know Tracy was trying to do us all a favor and copy a hundred pages, but I had it, so maybe Brian didn't have it. But anyways, the goal was not to go through all those pages for sure. What we want to try to do is this process was approved by town meeting back in 2012. And what this process does, and this is the only property that was designated to use this 43D permitting process. And the way it works is that each of the boards appoint a representative to be on this team of reviewing the property and so forth. And what that team does is then it brings it back to the appropriate boards to do their normal process and review. So there's a representative from the Board of Selectmen, from the Planning Board, from Open Space, from Conservation, and Board of Health. I think that's all of them. So we have got to update the guidelines that you all got copies of. And there has been some preliminary discussion with Serpide about updating it. They were the ones that originally put this document together. So over the next few weeks, we need to try to get this document updated and in place. One of the things that our board has to decide is who's the representative gonna be for the Board of Selectmen, number one. But also, the document states that the coordinator, you know, to handle this is the town administrator. And, you know, there's quite a bit of work involved here. So I think that over the next few weeks, we need to discuss that and decide, you know, if the, you know, the town administrator's got a lot of things on her plate right now, whether she wants to take this on or not. So does anybody have any questions? Oh, just so you know, the presentation that we had a couple of weeks ago, you know, at this point, about the property and what's going there, and they're proposing a 400,000 square foot, you know, distribution center, and that also includes, you know, tearing down the building and cleaning up, you know, the site. So everybody's aware that for the next couple of months anyways, they're gonna finish their environmental studies and put their environmental plan together, which has to be discussed and reviewed, you know, but with the EP and all the costs, you know, associated with it. So this permitting process probably won't start until the first part of October, somewhere in that timeframe, so everybody has an idea. So there will be plenty of opportunity for people to voice their opinions at multiple meetings about the project, and some of the concerns about the project, and so forth and so on. So does any of the board members, town administrators, have any question about the 43D process? You didn't read that document?
Oh, I went through the whole thing, and it was the most, the highlight of my weekend, sir.
You better get used to it, because we're gonna be talking about it a lot over the next 69 months.
Yeah, but just to recap, you said roughly October, you think, is when they may be looking to their next phase?
Yes.
It could change.
Because they still have to put all their engineering plans, you know, together, and then they, you know, would get submitted to the appropriate boards. And I would hope, though, that this team of people would probably meet sometime end of August, first part of September.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, Devaney had gone through and updated all the contacts in the 43D. We had a problem with a couple of the tables that they corrupted once we did it, but all the contacts have been updated in that. So as far as having to update, you know, who is in the department, and their telephone numbers, and their email addresses, that's all updated as of two weeks ago.
Okay, that's good start. So we'll take it to the next step then. And I know, I know the Planning Board has had their discussion about their representative. I don't think the Conservation has discussed it. Our board has not discussed it. So, I mean, maybe at the next meeting, we can decide, you know, who our representative will be too.
Okay, so would you like me to send out a letter to the boards and committees and have them consider the project and who they would like?
Yeah, that's fine. So that's the Planning Board, the Conservation Commission, the Board of Health, and the Open Space Committee, and the Board of SWAT.
Okay.
Okay, yes.
For the record, I'm not interested in participating on that committee.
Are you very clear on that?
Very clear on that.
Okay.
Just for the record, so you and Brian can buy for that one.
All right, well, we can decide at the next meeting. In fairness to Brian, unfortunately, there'll be a lot of day meetings, Brian, for this project, so that, you know, I'm not saying eliminate you, it's up to you. But there's a lot of, a lot of stuff here that has to be discussed, so.
Yeah, maybe we can just put it on.
I gladly do it if Brian doesn't want to do it, but we'll discuss the.
Yeah, we can discuss it. I'm just letting everyone know that I have enough with my APC and all my other stuff going on, so.
Okay, the next, anybody have any questions on that? You're all set?
Mr. Chair is gonna make a suggestion on the agenda, if you don't mind. Looks like we've got police and fire here for a number of items that are way down in our list. I don't know if it's worth going out of order.
No, we should make them wait.
All right. Let the record show his answer.
All right. Where are they?
I like the main wrench.
Item 456.
Okay, so what do we got here? We got, what number are they?
12 is Fire.
Okay, let's talk about number 12 and discuss the request from the Chief to declare a wrench in a welder supply surplus property.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Sorry about that. I'm on the phone, kinda walking around. Sir, basically, I wrote you a letter. This came from cleaning out our Fire Department storage bins, and we came across an old, looks like a military surplus winch, and an old welder. And apparently, there's some value there. I showed it to Franklin, and basically, part of the process is to demon surplus, so he can auction it off for me.
Okay, what about the welder? There didn't seem to be any value on that.
Um, I don't know anything about welders, but both my deputy and Franklin seemed to think that it could get something, it was better than throwing it away.
Okay, so I'll entertain a motion to declare this equipment surplus to be auctioned off.
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion?
None from me.
All those in favor?
Fabian, aye.
Day, aye.
LaCamer, aye. Thanks, Chief.
Thank you, appreciate your help. Thanks for moving me up too, it's great.
Okay, and where are we here? 15, no, not 15. 16. Okay, we have a request from the Chief to, for a temporary appointment for Emily Mello as Sergeant Chief.
Thank you. As you're aware, I have, one of my supervisors is out, possibly for an extended period of time with a medical injury, which leaves an opening for Sergeant. To reduce the cost of filling his shifts with overtime, it is cost-effective to make a temporary sergeant or an acting sergeant for the term that he's out. I request that Officer Emily Mello be appointed as temporary sergeant while he's out. Officer Mello has proven herself. She's qualified, she has the experience, and she's trusted to make decisions of a supervisor.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion to appoint Emily Mello as a temporary sergeant?
I'll gladly make that motion, Mr. Chair, that Officer Emily Ann Mello to the position of acting sergeant, or just sergeant?
Temporary sergeant.
Temporary sergeant, okay.
I'll second the motion.
Any discussion?
I think Emily's great. I think she's proven herself also. I know the Chief thinks highly of her, so I'm happy to see Emily move to this position for us.
Okay, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Fabian, aye.
Day, aye.
LaCamer, aye.
Yeah, the only thing that says here, just, we can add to the motion, I guess, is effective July 6th and expire when the supervisor staffing shortage returns to normal. Tracy's not with us, right, to keep us in line?
No.
Okay.
Okay, so the motion has been amended?
Okay.
Okay, all those in favor?
Fabian, aye.
Day, aye.
Camer, aye.
Okay.
Congratulations.
Thank you, Sergeant.
Yeah, congratulations, Emily.
Congratulations, Sergeant.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Okay.
Have a good night.
You too. Okay, going back to the 43D, we do have a message here from chat from Mike Wiggs. Should there be a few townspeople on this committee? Unfortunately, this is done by state statute, and the committee is made up of those people that I mentioned, but we certainly would love to have anybody participate in any of these discussions for any of these meetings. Not only the team meetings, but also, which will be posted as public meetings, and also the other meetings with the Planning Board and Conservation and so forth. So just so you know, Mike, okay? All right, the next thing on the agenda is to discuss the Route 79 project. As everybody knows, it passed at the election. I mean, it only passed by 27 votes, if I remember correctly, the numbers. And then at town meeting, it passed by 131 to 18. So we appreciate, you know, the support, you know, for that project. And I think it's a very important project, you know, it's gonna take two or three years, you know, to get the project completed. So I guess the next step probably would be, or should be, that we need to have a conversation with the Beta Group, who is the engineering firm that's doing the design, and also Mast DOT, so we can get moving on the next step, which is getting to the 75% design. And I know that I think Maureen has already had some preliminary discussion, so.
Mr. Chair, so I reached out to Serpide, Mast DOT, and Beta. I gave them all of our documentation from the vote. I showed them all that. They're going to have a meeting at the end. Serpide and Mast DOT are gonna have the JTBG meeting at the end of summer. And then they'll be reallocating spots on the TIP schedule for us to get our place on the schedule, because we were bumped back in September when the last vote happened, and we're kind of floating to find our next space. So then they reevaluate where everyone is in their process, and they put you on the schedule based on that. The thing that will help get us on the schedule quicker will be whenever we get the hearing and 75% design from Beta. So they're gonna, Beta is gonna give us all that information this week on what we need to do and what we'll need to pay for to get that going and move that forward. And then we'll have to look at probably some short-term bands to cover the Beta fees going forward on that. But everyone's excited that the project's passed. They're ready to go, and we're ready to, you know, help facilitate moving forward on that.
Okay. I would like to make sure that the DPW Director Franklin is really involved, you know, in this project, and kinda follow me up on it, and especially have it to do with the schedules and so forth. But people should realize that this is, by the time the design gets done and gets bid out and so forth, we're talking at least probably two, two and a half years before it starts.
Agreed.
Okay, anybody got any questions on that?
I'm at this time.
Okay, all right. Okay, the next thing that I wanted to talk about is we have a number of town projects that some have been delayed and some are being new projects. And I wanted to kinda talk about each one of them, and so we can talk about some responsibilities and so forth. The one that I think is really important, especially if we're considering opening the town office for appointments only, you know, right now, is that we need to get the Selectmen's conference room completed in a very short period of time. So I know that they're supposed to be starting, you know, that project. If it wasn't today, it's going to be shortly.
Tomorrow.
Tomorrow, okay. So what I would like, Maureen, is an update. There was a schedule that was put together back in February, and I'd like to get the schedule updated, so we can make sure that we have the right players involved that are gonna be doing the work and to getting it done. So if you could do that very quickly, because we really need this space badly.
Yeah, agreed. So speaking to Nate Darling, we're both on the same page on the construction that needs to be happening, as well as the electrical work, and then the flooring. So the flooring will be, right now, they're emptying out the desks, and then they have to move the desks out, and then the flooring will be removed, and then construction will start this week, or demolition, rather, will start this week. The challenge is always trying to do construction in an office that has people in it. So having Tracy be out on vacation this week is gonna make it easier to have all of some things started and moving forward on that.
Yeah, the only thing that I had talked to Nate about too is that I know that removing the carpet and putting down the new floor is probably the longest thing to get done.
Agreed.
And maybe we consider delaying that part of it until we, because we are not gonna be able to open the town hall with, without having this space where somebody can go and meet with somebody, because we don't have any other space in the town office building, so. This is a problem, major problem.
Yep, and I would caution against not doing the rug, because that furniture is so prohibitive to move in and out and removing the rug. That rug is, for those of you at home, it's probably about 40 years old, I would say.
No, I understand that.
Yeah, and not moving it and being able to do the door jams the right way, and all the height of the doors the correct way would probably be more expensive and time-consuming in the long run, and have to empty out the offices again. So just putting that as a cautionary.
Is there a rough work schedule if things hadn't been delayed on like start and end dates?
Yeah, it was supposed to start back in March along with everything else, yeah. So I have.
Supposed to start back on February 1st.
Yeah.
Well, at the length of time, that's all.
Yeah, we have the schedule and I will, I'll make sure you all get a copy of the updated schedule, what that looks like. But yeah, delays are not uncommon on any project. And then having, not being able to have any workmen in and get some of the preliminary stuff done ahead of time really put us back significantly.
Yep. Yeah, I was just curious if they were able to start today, you know, gangbusters, how long would it take them? Two weeks, three weeks, what they were looking at?
They have to demo some of the built-in old cabinets from, yeah, the 50s or 60s possibly. And then they can do the floor and they can do the construction. But Rich is right, the floor is the hardest part of it. They have to rip it up and then they'll seal over the tiles that they have. The tiles are all intact, they'll seal over those tiles. And then they'll put the floor down and then it's like two or three days you can't walk on the floor. And then you have to seal it with three coats of the sealer they use. So it does take like the whole week just to do the floor, so.
Like at home, you can't live in your own house and the floors are done.
Yeah, yeah, it's not, it's not the best scenario and we're already pinched for space. So I might have a situation where I will be asking Tracy to work from home for a day or two if we can't get it all done in a prescribed time.
Have the floor people already been scheduled?
They're scheduled for tomorrow to come in. The floor people are gonna come in, do all their measurements and get everything down because now that they know that the desks and stuff are coming out, not the desks, the built-ins, it's a different measurement.
Okay, the second thing on the list is the Old Town Hall. The House and Senate and the governor have signed early voting for the primary election and then for the presidential election. And the primary election is 10 days before the primary, which is September 1st. And the presidential election is 20 days, you know, before the presidential election. And as we have discussed before, we have no space for this early voting. We can't use the police station because the police station, as we go along here hopefully soon, opening up that space to have re-meetings. So what we talked about before was taking the Old Town Hall and doing some electrical work and putting in the heating, the unit vent, heating and air conditioning, you know, system so that can be used. And I know that Nate has, you know, got quotes on that. And that needs to be scheduled in the next two to three weeks. I mean, because we have no other space to go to to put up this early voting. Because once you put up the early voting, the place has to be secure and has to stay, you know, in the same place. You can't keep moving it from one place to the other. So this is, this is very, very important to get done in the next two or three weeks.
I will, I know, I talked to Nate about it last week and he was getting quotes together and trying to get a schedule of when the work can be done, so I'll follow up with him on that.
Okay.
What is, Mr. Chair, what is the, the ramp is in, but is that a step? Is that a ramp that has to be fixed at the bottom? I'm not quite sure what that is.
It has to be reconfigured. Because when they put it in, the elevation for the handicap ramp was not correct. So they're taking that and moving it, and I think they added a new section, right, Maureen?
Yeah, and so everything's being held up because the way it is now, the angle that it's at now, if we tried to extend that, it would extend halfway into like the library parking lot to get the right slope on it. So that has to be done that way. It's been, it's been kind of a thorn in my side. So I get where everyone's looking at it since November and not being done. But it has to be done correctly in order for us to be able to be compliant on it.
Yeah, I just thought it, when we had first talked about it, I thought it was not as complicated. And then I went and I actually looked at it and it looks.
Yeah, it's not, it's not ideal, let's say that. It was not at all what we were expecting to have happen and it wasn't part of the process that we were expecting to have to deal with after. We were expecting to pour a small pad and have a tiny lip after, that was the idea.
That's what I thought you said, yeah.
Yep, and then, and then as time went over, you could see that the distance was not right for what we needed.
Yeah, it's like you need a step, which.
To get the ramp, which is not good, which is not what we're looking to do.
Okay.
Okay, so, yeah, we need to get that, you know, addressed, you know, right away. Because like I said, you know, what's 10 days prior to September 1 is, you know, August, whatever. Right, oh, thank you. It has to be done because we got nowhere else to go, so. Anyway, so that's that project.
On that ramp, if I may, the town isn't absorbing any burden for what sounds like a mismeasurement or anything, are they? I mean, the angles there haven't changed, I'm assuming, since they measured originally, is that?
So Nate's working with the supplier on that, the contractor that put it in on that. He hasn't said that there's gonna be any upcharges for that, but I'll double check with him.
Okay.
And then as far as the, as far as the mini-split to go in there, it was just the debate on how big of a mini-split we need to heat that area as, you know, because some of the meetings or the votes might later in the year, it might be cold. You know, do we need a bigger unit to cover more territory or a deeper, a deeper freeze?
I'm sure it's a very well insulated building.
Yes.
No insulation. But, you know, the town has talked about this for years to get this done. And this gives us the opportunity to do it and fix it and do it right. Because, you know, it's used for other functions and, you know, either you're sweltering in there or you're freezing to death, you know, because you can't go cold, so this is a priority. Any other on that? The next item is the highway salt shed, which was funded, you know, last year. And just so you know that where the salt shed is going, the Franklin has to asphalt underneath it and that's gonna be done in the next couple of weeks when he does the asphalting for those two roads. So that's ready to go and that comes under the responsibility of the DPW Director. The next one is the generators. Now, we funded, the COA generator has been funded for some time. And we funded the town hall generator, not all of it, but most of it, at town meeting. So I think this would be a good responsibility for the fire chief to take over this since he's responsible for emergency management anyways. And so because, you know, we gotta take some of this burden, you know, off Nate for other people to take on some of these responsibilities for some of these projects because he just physically can't do it, I mean, it's just too much of it, you know, so anyways. Then we got the highway office, so the highway office goes back to 2016, believe it or not, 2017, 2018. And then we just funded additional $50,000 to try to do it the right way. So the first thing we need to do is get a design, you know, done. And I know that Nate Darling, you know, has some preliminary numbers to get the design done. But if we don't have a design, we can't do the project. So this once again is a priority to get this done, you know, by the end of the year. So, you know, you've got a lot of work to do here to get that, to get that done. So once again, that's a combination of Nate and Franklin. Anybody have any questions on that? Okay, IT projects, I would like an update on all IT projects for the next meeting as to where we are and what we got left, you know, to finish and a schedule as to what, what needs to be done and when it's gonna be finished. Because some of these IT projects have been going on for months and we need to close these things down. Having to do with that, also, we have some financial software that we purchased that I know has not been installed, you know, at this point. How are we gonna install it or aren't we gonna install it and what are the options to do that? So I'd like an answer on that too, you know, sometime, probably in August, you know, fairness to get a handle on what that, what needs to be done for that. The zoning bylaws, codification project, I know that was on hold. And I think we need a new plan to get that restarted. So once again, I think sometime in August, we have to, you know, get together and get a plan for that so we can get that project done, which is going through all of the zoning bylaws and updating all the bylaws and making sure that they are, what's the word, in conjunction with each other and that they're done correctly. So I know that project has been hanging out there for a while. So if you could give us an update on that, Maureen, sometime in August, please.
Mr. Chair, Mr. Chair, on that one, I had started working with Lillian on some of that stuff. So I'd be happy to, you know, work with Maureen and Lillian on that because I already have a bunch of the paperwork on it. So I don't know if we're looking for a point person on some of these things, but.
That's great. You know, and I know one of the problems we have is we need a planning board member to help, you know, with that process. So, you know, during the month of August there, we can get a handle on what needs to be done so we can get this project done.
Okay, all right, I'll, yeah, I'll work with Maureen and Lillian on that and we can give you an update beginning of August and.
Okay.
On that, okay.
We've funded some monies for security systems. And I think that we ought to ask the chief to handle this and look at what our options are. I know there's some proposals out there and maybe Brian, this might be a good one that you can help with, look at that.
Sure, yeah, I'd be very interested.
Okay.
Mr. Chair.
If we can get.
Additionally, on the security systems, Lieutenant Maltese is certified to do security systems through, when he was the school resource officer, he went through that training. So I'm sure Matt with Chief Perkins would say the same thing that Ryan Martin could be part and parcel of any of those discussions also as he is certified in it.
That's up to the chief, that's fine. Okay, so can you, Maureen, send an email to the chief and Brian too, if you want, and Brian? So they can meet sometime in the month of July here to see if we get a handle on what we need to do. And maybe, there might be some additional stuff that we need to do. And then with a town meeting in the fall, you know, we probably could add some additional funding to do what's necessary. Because I know that some of the concerns have to do with the Ted Williams camp, you know, as well. Okay, the other one is the Peach Pond, we have enough funding to do that roof. And this comes under Nate, so Nate's gotta put a spec together and get it out to bid. This has been going on since last fall and now the funding is available. So we need to get a handle on this project and get it out to bid. Okay, the last thing is that I think at some point, not tonight, we need to talk about town hall renovations, okay? We got some problems in the town hall area, in the fire department for that matter. You know, spacing issues and things that need to be addressed and need to be fixed. And so we need to think about that and we need to talk about that. And I know that we have some time, you know, to do that, but we still should get on our plate, you know, to do something about it. Okay, yes.
I was just gonna ask, perhaps, Maureen, my understanding is we had some flooding in town hall due to the crazy rains we had last week. And did we discover that just by chance, by somebody going down there? You know, I'm just afraid we've got a lot of paperwork down there if there was a lot of moisture over a weekend if no one had gone down.
I've been here about a year now and we've probably had three flooding incidents. So it's not completely abnormal that we'd have some water in. This time we had a lot more water in and it flashed in and it filled up the wells around the perimeter and then it seeped in. So I know Nate and I have talked about where to place some of these long-term files that we have down there. And we wanna move some of this stuff that's down there currently into the historic library basement, which used to be the children's library for the town of Lakeville because that historically has no flooding. But yes, Nate and I have had a couple of conversations about it, especially after this last one where it wasn't just a couple puddles on the floor. It was, you know, we had to get some suction to pull the water out.
There's no existing sump pump system down there, somebody just says, hey, we should go take a look.
There isn't, but it just so happens that we walk by it every day and you can see if there's water. You could see if there's water because it's right at the base of the stair.
Fish in the window.
Yeah.
Maureen, through, through the chair. Was there leaking in, in some of the offices too?
So it wasn't leaking through the walls, it was leaking through specifically my front windows at the very top, which I had never seen. And I've, but I've never seen rain like we got for that two hours. I mean, it literally looked like someone was pouring buckets of water against thing. And I've never seen any leaks, but yeah, it splashed through on the very top of the window casings, which was just bizarre.
Yeah, okay. And I mean, I can tell that, you know, you've discussed it with Nate, he's the building inspector, whatever. And, you know, I know he's on top of all that kind of stuff, but it's, we know how important it is to stay on top of any of that.
Yeah, I mean, you can hear it when it's really windy out that there's some gaps here and there as it sounds like massive whistling and kind of creepy. But it is a very old building and even though these windows were custom, I would not say that they are the best windows I've ever seen.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, anything, anything else anybody wants to bring up about its town projects or concern right now? Okay, the number six on the agenda is to discuss the next step for the management company for the Loon Pond Lodge. Oh, a couple of, at least a couple of months back now. We discussed the Loon Pond Lodge, you know, agreement and we got some work to do, you know, on that agreement. It needs to be updated and it needs to be modified, needs to be changed. But one of the, one of the questions is that that contract can be renewed for one year, okay? Or we need to decide whether we want to put an RFP out and go out to bid. Again, see any other management companies that may be interested in running the Loon Pond Lodge. And this has to do with, so everybody knows, has to do with running weddings and things like that that occur, you know, over there. So does the board have any questions on that?
I've been trying to keep myself up to speed on this from some of your earlier meetings before I joined. Was there any leaning from your last discussions on which way you were thinking of going? Whether go out to bid or renew it for a year while we determine what other changes we might like to see?
We hadn't decided yet, I know that Maureen and I, you know, have talked about it. And the question, this contract expires on November 1st if I'm not mistaken, I believe.
November, but I don't know if it's the first.
I got it right here. Looks like November 14th, I think.
Yep, and then their liquor contract expires on December 31st.
Right. So I think the, the next steps ought to be, before we decide to go out to bid, I think, is that I know that the park commission, I believe it's Scott and Mike Nolan, Scott Holmes and Mike Nolan, the park commission commissioners, you know, wanna have a meeting to. Commissioners, you know, wanna have a meeting to discuss this, you know, so. Is there any member of the board that would like to take this on? I can't do everything.
I can take this on, considering I'm the park liaison.
I was gonna say, you're a liaison, if you'd like that, otherwise I can.
I can take this on, and, you know, my my biggest thing, Brian, going back to before you you joined the board. Was that I don't want to be racing last minute, so I would be happy. To work on this now, and let's, you know, work with them, work with Maureen. And just figure out if the contract is everything, you know, we want it to be. If if it's lacking in some places, I just don't want to be racing at the end to try to get this done, that's my biggest thing. So Rich, I'd be happy to work on this.
And, you know, we certainly would, you know, give you, give it, give you some input and. You know, I got, I got a huge file on it here, if you need it.
Yeah, no, and I I've been making tons of notes all along with every every meeting we've had with the parks and, you know, the meeting we had with the. With the present company and everything, so. You know, I I think we we start first with the contract and see if that's, if it's meeting our needs and, you know, and then we can go from there.
I I had reached out at the beginning of the month, end of last month, one of those. And spoke to Mike Nolan and and asked for him and his people individually. To look at the contracts and make their suggestions on where they think improvements could be as far as what they need to see. So I know they are working on that, and that should be on one of their agendas coming up. They're all looking at the contracts and seeing where they see deficiencies, so that was the first step for them. So I just wanted to let you know that that's already in motion to to help. Because they were the administrators of the contract last time, so they were closest to see what was working and what wasn't working for them. On a bunch of different levels that maybe might be different than what we're gonna look at.
Okay.
Okay.
I, yeah, and I can join them, I can talk to Maureen, maybe we can join them together, Maureen, at a meeting or and go over it, but.
The best idea, I think that's, that would probably be best, okay.
Mister Chair. Sorry, I was just gonna say, from my watching of your previous videos and reading minute notes, it seems like. You know, there were some misunderstandings or really reporting practices that could be strengthened with whomever the next company is. I don't know if if we focus there, if there's any benefit to trying to align these contracts to the fiscal year, I don't know if the town accountant would have any input on that. You know, whether or not we want to look at things that you'd see in a normal restaurant setting, like having cameras on the till at the bar to make sure that, you know, normal money handling practices are being used. So just some of the things I throw out there and see what we could come up with.
Yeah, I think any suggestions would be great, and, you know, and Leah and I can bring anything you guys have back to the. As individuals, back to the parks, as, you know, suggestions on how to improve. Reporting relations and and flow and all those type of things that everyone needs to be involved in to have a successful contract this time around.
Okay, that's good, just one thing I want to bring up there, there seems to be either confusion. Or missing documentation having to do with us getting eighteen percent versus twenty percent. For the catering services. Now, I just happened to mention it to the previous town administrator, and she says there's a big folder called Loon Pond Lodge. That the information is in there, because we can't find any contracts with any of the catering services. That says eighteen percent, I mean, and. Well, we've only been paid eighteen percent, and the management contract says we're supposed to get twenty percent, so we need to get that issue resolved.
So that folder is supposed to be in the selectman's office?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. All right, next thing on the agenda is the discuss some of the status of the marijuana host agreements. We. There's a lot of problems with the cannabis commission going on, having to do with host commissions and approvals and stuff like that. And, you know, since. I don't know, since the first of the year, they really haven't addressed, you know, a lot of these issues. Now, we have contracts, you know, in place, and I'm pretty sure that, I know that. We are certainly seeing them, I think that Brian's probably got copies now, I would guess. So there is some issues, you know, in the existing contracts that, in my opinion, need to be addressed, and. So. It's not easy to say, okay, we're just gonna throw everything away and start over, because we have existing contracts in place, and so. We have to. At certain points, negotiate, you know, changes to the contracts, and there's a couple of them. That are pending, you know, right now, and one of them is the Northeast. Which one is that, Maureen?
Northeast Alternatives?
Yeah, Northeast Alternative, we're in the process right now, I'm negotiating their contract again. Because they were originally wholesale and retail. And now they want to do a separate agreement, you know, just for retail and keep the wholesale, so. We've had town council look at that, and she has made some recommendations for some changes. And we need to get back on that to try to get, you know, those issues, you know, resolved.
Are they looking to renegotiate only one half of the agreement, or are they getting out of the recreational business and keeping the medical?
Opening up a recreational agreement in a in a separate location.
Growers, that one is twisted growers.
So. So that that definitely is an issue. But there's a few things in the contracts. That I don't think are fair and are right. One is that if you sell wholesale to a retail. Recreational retail establishment in the town of Lakeville, okay, and there's two of them. We don't get anything from the wholesaler. That's not right. So that's one of the things that we talked to twisted twisted growers about, is that they should be paying the town a percentage. You know, of the wholesale to somebody else, so. And the same thing applies to Nature's Remedy, you know, they have so wholesale. And they split off and sold their recreational to another company, which happens to be in the same building. And so when they sell wholesale to them, we don't get anything either, and that that's not right. So that's an issue that needs to be addressed, and the other thing that I think needs to be addressed is that. The agreements that were negotiated for wholesale was based on twenty eight dollars a pound instead of three percent. Of. Gross sales, now, that's a big difference between selling per pound. In selling three percent of the gross, so I'll give you an example. Right now, marijuana is selling between three thousand and four thousand dollars a pound. So if we're getting twenty eight dollars a pound, if we were getting three percent, we would get over a hundred dollars a pound. That's a significant difference between what the market is, so. There's a ton of work here that needs to be done, and I. Will continue on this process if you want me to.
Yeah, I know you've put a lot of time into this, Rich, I just actually reread a ton of the rules and the laws from the state and. I have one question that maybe can be answered, maybe it can't. Tax bills just went out, the preliminary tax bills. Did the personal, did any of these companies get charged personal, maybe this is my assessor's hat coming on, but did anybody get charged personal property tax?
I have no idea. That's an issue. That's another issue, yes.
Yeah, because I know, I know that the requests went out for personal property tax to. Bountiful Farms and. Nature's Remedy, I.
So the forms, those forms that we send to businesses, because they technically don't own the building.
Correct, so then we had them make sure that the owners of the building had theirs, because some of the property. Very expensive property is actually attached to the building owners now, the way that they've structured it. And we wanted to be able to make sure that we are capturing it, so it did go out, but it did go out late. Because I, when I followed up with both of those people that are are working, but not fully functional right now. As far as what they're doing, they both said that they hadn't received them previous, and so I, you know. Made sure their addresses were correct and sent them copies and connected them with with our assessor.
Okay, shame on me, because I don't remember, and I should have looked it up, but if you're. There's one particular type of company that you can be where you're exempt from personal property tax. However, I don't think either one of these companies fall into that category, so I'm curious. And, you know, I did check with our accounting department, we have received a couple of checks, I think, for. Legal reimbursement, I think.
Yeah, every time we get a legal bill from KP Law, I go through and I circle whatever could be a reimbursement. And Tracy sends them out a bill.
Yeah, and I, you know, do wanna thank you for doing that, because prior to you coming on, whatever it was, timing, whatever, I don't think we had been. You know, billing some of that, so I'm glad that that's getting billed, but I am curious, like we said about. You know, they have, there's a lot of personal property stuff in there.
Yeah.
Which could be generating more tax revenue for the town, so.
Agreed, agreed, and and it was eye opening for me to see that they didn't own that property when they first submitted theirs. They put me on copy, and I looked through it, and I'm like, well, that's not what we saw, because we did that tour, if you remember, and we knew. You know, some of that stuff was sky high value wise, and we wanted to capture that as far as revenue for the town.
Yeah, but I mean, I do think some of the things like the growing tables and everything else is got to be considered their personal property, so. Maybe we can work with the assessors and see if we can get them to come in and give us an explanation.
If I may, do we feel like we're at a point where we now understand the process better to where we can look back and say. We liked how we did this, we don't like how we did this, and then are there any changes from the state we expect to be coming? I mean, like Rich said, there's a lot of work in these things to negotiate each one. Is there any benefit to the town and all the businesses altogether that to try to work towards a. Just a common template that the town of Lakeville starts with to cut down on these, you know, man hours.
Mister Chair, if I could answer that, Rich and I said the same thing to town council and. And she gave us some some of her, well, we'll just say favorite templates, you know, after working, so. As you may or may not know, when the state released all of the ability for towns to negotiate HCAs. They gave them little to no real guidance on how they should be structured, so what what came about was what I like to call divisional creativity. So every individual place came up with their own way of doing it, and what was great in twenty seventeen. Maybe not so great in twenty twenty, so we do have some templates, and and I could share with everyone, you know, what those templates look like. But yeah, I agree, there might be a a better way to kind of create them in the future. And one way, and just be able to check boxes off and cross them off, and instead of having to reinvent the wheel every time we put an HCA together.
Yeah, I mean, I know that some of the reviewing that I've been doing said. That anything pre two thousand seventeen, because that was before. The recreational adult use was grandfathered in in a lot of cases, so Brian, there is some. You know, we definitely need to figure out what's changed, if it's still that way. Are those companies still grandfathered in, or do they now have to meet different standards when they're doing renewals or something like that? So.
What is our line to the Cannabis Commission, I mean, do we have a point of contact there, or is it just?
Through town council.
Through town council, okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, just, there's, there's a major change coming, for sure, that I know of. One is that they're gonna allow delivery. To households directly from the facility, so those are gonna require either modifications to the existing agreement. New agreements, and that, I don't know if it's been a hundred percent finalized yet, but it's coming. And so we're gonna have to deal with that, you know, and so if you're a wholesaler. And you want to deliver to somebody's house, you're gonna be able to do that. So there's all kinds of controls and regulations and guidelines, and it's very complicated, you know, process that we have to. To follow. So we can squelch any rumors out there? We have not received any money, except for the reimbursement for some of the legal fees, which should have been done previously. From any of these marijuana companies, so. I want to make sure people know, we haven't got anything yet, so, just so everybody knows.
Has anybody sold yet, do we know?
Pardon me?
Has anybody made their first sale that would trigger their contract numbers?
Well, you know, that that's another thing that that needs to be addressed with each one of these. They don't tell us, you know, what they're doing, and when they're starting, and when they're selling, and and they're only required to. Send their reports, you know, to the state, I believe it's on a quarterly basis, if I'm not mistaken, Maureen, I think.
And that's the the quarterly reports where they're giving all the information, it's their their point of sale information, their weight. Everything they have to throw away, everything they sold, etc.
We don't, we don't see any of that upfront as to what's going on, so.
We do.
We need to talk about that, too.
We do get a notification from the Cannabis Commission when a company gets their license, correct? But then I, that's it, that's it after that, we don't.
We don't know when they're starting up, no.
We don't have any formal, unless they call us and say we planted our first seed, or we just sold our first. I mean, I do know one was advertising on LinkedIn that they were opening a retail facility this past weekend, so I'm assuming they're selling.
So, Mister Chair, if I could, I was gonna bring it up under old business, but why not, we're talking about HCAs, I'll I'll talk about it now. I spoke with Northeast, no, wrong, Nature's Remedy. Owner on Thursday, and. He said that we will get our first check for the ten thousand dollars for the donation. He said he he'll get it for us by the end of this week, and in in two weeks, he will get us the fifty thousand. For the one time fee to the town, so it is on the horizon, we will get it. What happened with him is he opened, and then three weeks later, they shut him down for COVID nineteen, so. Even though he had his first sale, he didn't get his second sale, so he he did have some trouble there, and, you know, we want to work with him and and make that. Right for the town, my question on on that, though, is. We have some options for the donation. Portion, and we could either have the selectman decide where the donation goes, or create a board. Depending on which HCA you read.
We don't need another board. We got enough, I mean, you're not talking about hundreds of thousands of dollars here. About ten thousand dollars, and that that would not be difficult to decide, and we certainly can take input, you know, as to. Where it should go and so forth, but we don't need another board.
Yeah, was there, was there anything, I can't seem to find anything that said. You know, where that money was supposed to go for either, even the fifty, I know that it was not. Supposed to go in the operating fund, which.
Correct, because it's one time, one time monies for the fifty, and as far as the donation money. Todd has set up a separate line item to put that in, so we can hold it and then disperse it. However, the board sees fit for the donations, and the fifty thousand was specifically set aside not to be part. Um, and the 50,000 was specifically set aside not to be part of the impact fee. So we could use it for a broader range of things if we needed to.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. So like we said, we gotta get a better handle on what's going on here.
And that, that's gonna fall under you, right, Rich?
No, I changed my mind.
Well, just, I'm making my to-do list here. So.
What'd you say, Brian?
I was just gonna say, it's great to hear Nature's Remedy did actually open their doors. I mean, I hope they do well. I mean, they're in a new market that everybody's learning. So, I mean, it's things that they open and shut down, but you know, when they're able to, I, I hope they do a bang up job. So good luck to them.
Yeah. They brought their people back. They had to lay them off and everything and brought the people back. So, um, the, their people are back working.
Good. Okay. So, um, yeah, okay. Sorry, we have a lot to cover. We gotta get back on track on some of these things. Uh, uh, so the next on the agenda is the, um, discuss the status of the reopening of, uh, uh, Town Office Building. I know that Maureen sent out an email, which everybody should have got a copy of, um, to, um, discuss, you know, what the options are about reopening. Uh, first of all, this is only the Town Office Building, the, um, the library and the COA. Um, there is no guidelines right now to open any, either of those facilities, even though the library is doing, uh, curbside pickup, but we'll see what happens over the next, uh, few weeks. So this is only, you know, the, uh, the Town Office, uh, building itself and, uh, what's, um, Maureen, I don't know if you wanna go through it, Maureen, but you're just proposing that, um, you know, we set up appointments for Town Clerk, Town Treasurer, maybe Board of Health. I know that, um, I think it's gonna be, uh, very difficult to do the building inspector and the, the zoning enforcement officer because he's looking through a window. And he has to look at, um, you know, map, maps and plans and stuff like that. So I think the process now, I mean, if they wanna set an appointment up, they could do it over the phone and provide the plans, which they've been doing, you know, it hasn't been an issue.
Plans. It's actually worked out really well.
Right. So we'll probably just continue with that. So, um, the, one of the big questions I think is cleaning, is that once somebody gets inside the building, then we have to clean the area that this person, you know, has been to. I mean, these, these are the, the rules and the guidelines that are set up by the state. It's so different than going, you know, to a restaurant, you know, or whatever. It's a similar thing. So I think that we need to, um, work on, um, you know, figuring out what we need to do to make sure that not only is the person coming to Town Hall, but the employees, you know, are protected and safe. So, which is gonna require, you know, additional resources because, you know, does the person call the individual departments to make up, to make their appointments?
They would. Now, in, in the idea is they would call and they would make the appointment and, um, we would have the, for example, we would have the, uh, the Town Clerk's office be able to take appointments on the hour. And then the treasure collector to be able to take them on the half hour. And that way you don't have the same people congregating in the same space in order to keep that six foot distance away and be socially spaced. So they would have that. And then, um, we could have, we could, whether we assign it to one person or not, but we would have someone come and wipe down the common areas in between the visits.
So who's gonna do that?
Well, usually that's Blake.
Well, I know, but you know, they got so much work to do.
Yeah. And, you know, i- if we wanna look into hiring some temp clean, uh, cleaning people to work in Town Hall or to work in various other areas. Because we're gonna have the same issue for the parks, for their bathrooms. In order for them to be up to their standards, um, those bathrooms in, in the parks are gonna need, you know, extra cleaning. And we, the three people that we have on are, are, are pretty maxed out, I, I'd say as far as schedules. So.
They have a full-time person over at the parks that works for the Park Commission that could clean.
They have, they have the laborer.
No, 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 not the laborer. They work for the High Rate Department. Talking about the other person that works for, um, the Park Commission that does the maintenance of the buildings inside.
Nope.
I can't think of his name.
Um, he's 18 hours.
Okay.
Yeah, he's 18 hours. So, um, that, that wouldn't cover the, uh, the needed time to, to make sure we're up, up to snuff on, on standards. Um, you know, we, we could reach out for seasonal help, um, to get that done if we want to, and that would be COVID, uh, COVID-19 related expenses.
This, Mr. Chair, if I may, this might be a daft question, but I'd seen a rumor that the state had actually said porta potties were acceptable. What, is there any truth to that matter? Is it cheaper to rent those if they are?
Horrible. It's disgusting.
I don't disagree.
You know, I've heard the same thing too, and I can't imagine that a porta potty is cleaner than a bathroom facility, but I'm not the Board of Health.
Yeah. Yeah. I, uh, I am absolutely repelled by the idea.
But I, I guess it's preliminary discussion with the Park Commission. They haven't decided what they wanna do yet, right?
No, they were just reaching out to me today on, on the standards that came out um, on Friday that I sent them as far as, you know, how it needs to be opened and, and the sanitation schedules.
Well, the, the, one of the problems from what I see is that they only allow 25 people.
Yep.
So.
But outdoors, outdoors is up to a hundred.
Right. Okay. So are you gonna wanna let a hundred people go into the main building to go to the bathrooms is the question. We're not gonna have a hundred people.
No, no. But do you wanna have a hundred people in a porta potty?
Why not?
Not at the same time.
Not at the same time.
It's better than having to clean those facilities continuously.
I just, yeah.
That's allowed.
Anyways, you know, discussing with the Park Commission, they're talking about the plan, but.
I, I just don't understand how we can, we must clean a bathroom facility, but yet no one cleans a porta potty. I mean, I, I'm not understanding. You know, I, I just don't understand what the difference is. I would think that you would have to clean a porta potty too.
And I'm simply asking as a point of hearsay at this point. I've heard the, the rumor. I didn't know if there was any factuality behind it.
There is, there is stuff in the documents to suggest that is a preferred method of use. Um, it, it's not a Maureen preferred method for sure. But it is suggested in, um, and some of the documents that came out from the Board of Health that that is a, uh, preferred, uh, preferred over, um, use of bathrooms as far as sanitation and compliance, which.
Well, none of you have to clean the bathrooms. You have to wipe the doors down and, you know, to do all kinds of things. So anyways, so talk to the Park Commission and see what their intentions are and then can put together a plan to see what they wanna do.
Okay.
Okay. Um, the question now is, is when do we wanna start the, um, the opportunity for the residents to make appointments, uh, to go to these various offices?
So my suggestion would be, um, because it's the one that has the most need for face-to-face contact would be start on the 13th and have the Town Clerk's office open on the 13th for that week. And then if everything goes well, then add on the assessors, um, the treasure collector, um, i- into that mix in the rotation that I said about the, uh, the hour, half hour, and then quarter of for the assessors. And then the separate and contained entrance for the Board of Health area um, would allow for the Board of Health to be able to have, um, appointments and then transition really easy into, you know, singular, one person at a time service style, um, within a few weeks. But yes, Board of Health would have its own area, um, to have appointments. And Conservation could also help service from there. And it, even though it's not firmed up, um, probably in, in, as far as how many plans, et cetera, that Nate would need to get, I think, uh, from my conversations with Nate, he could have some small amount of service that goes through that window at the Board of Health also. So it wouldn't be in the same hall, hallway. So we'd be able to maintain that safe social distancing. Because all of the traffic that would normally be in that hallway would be diverted into an area where, you know, only one person would be able to enter at a time.
Does the schedule allow for, and obviously we, we're, we're probably gonna learn as we go here. But has, has the schedule attempted to take into account the amount of the average time for these transactions as well as, yeah, okay.
10 minutes is the average time, but then you gotta give a little extra time. So that's why it's so spaced out so far. Um, I, I'd rather give more time at first and then, and then narrow it up. Um, but yeah, it's average transaction time is about 10 minutes. Lillian, more around 15, uh, depending on, uh, some of her stuff, but 10 minutes.
All right.
Well, I think, I think it would be a good idea that, uh, you, you tell the department heads, if you wanna make an appointment, why are we having this appointment? You know?
Oh, yeah. I talked about.
I didn't want this appointment. So it's.
I talked about that with the treasure collector today. And, you know, as they call, people should be redirected to the services that they can perform without having to come in. We have a robust online payment system for the treasure collector and, um, and Town Clerk. Um, and, uh, you know, we have that Dropbox out front, um, that we redirect people to all the time. But most of these things can be done online, by mail or through the Dropbox. Like I said, Lillian, um, in the Town Clerk's office had the most in-person stuff with being able to notarize and marriage certificates. Would, you know, in-person, um, is needed for both of those things.
Okay. So, uh, is the board okay with this plan then, or?
Um, yes. My only question, Mr. Chair, is we're definitely requiring masks when people come in, correct?
Absolutely.
Okay. I just wanna be sure that, you know, people are prepared to come in, but where I personally, this is my own personal opinion, not Leah the Selectman, Leah the person. I think Matt, the mask use in Massachusetts has helped us keep, you know, I'm looking at all the statistics and everything and I think it's helping. I do. So I'm, I'm, I'm okay with wearing masks for as long as they tell us to. So I just wanna be sure that we've done so much work, so much behind the scenes work, just trying to keep Town Hall going. And I just, I don't wanna be complacent and, you know, um, I, I mean, Lillian has been, you know, helping people who have, you know, crazy problems, like they couldn't afford their dog licenses and fines and, you know, so she's, she's really been trying to help people and I, I just hope that people are okay with wearing a mask coming in.
And, um, and we'll, we'll also have, I, I ordered them and, you know, it's only been three months, so I'm sure it'll be here any day. The dispensers for the masks, so we can have some masks available for people to grab and put on in case they forgot one. So there won't be that whole missing portion where, you know, someone comes in, oh, I forgot it. I'll just create this transaction and, and be done with it. You'll be like, no, there's masks right there.
Yep. Yep.
I'm generally okay with it too. I mean, I would just say focus on the customer experience as you learn, as the first few, in appointments go. And I can turn from being the happiest person, the most annoyed a person, when the person getting their haircut just in front of me shows up late and like sets the whole rest of the schedule backwards. So I think we'll just have to be firm with, you know, your appointment is for the transaction you set it up for, not, hey, while I'm here, there's four other things. Cause you're gonna start to affect everybody else.
Yep. Yeah. And hopefully, um, one, like Leah had said, or, um, you know, once they, or Rich had said, once they call for the, uh, for the service, we redirect them to, to show them that they, you know, with 99% of what they need to do, they, they don't actually need to do the face-to-face service. I mean, it's, it's just habit for a lot of people.
No, you're right.
Okay. Um, all right. So we're gonna start that with the Town Clerk's office next week.
On the 13th, when she comes back from vacation.
And see how that goes. Okay. Moving along, um.
Um, Mr. Chair, can I just, uh, ask you to read the comments there? I think we've gotten a couple of comments from Jose, actually from Lake Cam.
Yeah, but that's not something we should be talking about right now. I mean, uh, we can't specifically say, you know, what the 50K is gonna be used for from, uh, Nature's Remedy, cause we haven't even looked at it yet.
Yeah. No, I just wanted to acknowledge that we see them.
Yep. We see them.
Yep. Okay.
Okay. Um, I just wanted to, um, I think it was good for, um, I know Leah has been, um, involved in the, uh, Assawamset, uh, Pond Complex, you know, uh, grant. And, uh, if you could just kinda give us an update, you know, on where the grant is and what the next steps are, Leah, please.
Um, yeah. So the Assawamset Pond Complex is, um, a group that's been put together since, I don't even know when. Um, at minimum 2010, maybe the dam management, even before that, where everyone sits down and they talk about the pond and it just seems like all that was ever really talked about was the flooding is a problem, you know, the drought can be a problem. Well, for the first time, um, Senator Mike Roderick's got the group $100,000 and they, the group um, did a huge study. And again, I can't believe how fast this study got done even during COVID-19. So what this study has done is it's, uh, it's, um, showed us all where the, the, the actual problems are. So now everything from the dam to some of the, um, you know, where the sand has built up, there needs to be some dredging. So they really have identified, um, of, of the problems, the culverts and everything. Um, the links are really long to the presentation that was given to the public, the public outreach. Um, but I will ask that either Maureen or Tracy put those on the town's website because they're really long links. It's not just like, you know, www dot whatever. Um, so, um, we, this is, this is a really big deal too for the state because this whole MVP thing is a new program that the Secretary of the Environment. And this is exactly why she created this, so that we could get all these communities to work together. So, um, we have Grant, another, the second round of grant money to come in. Unfortunately, some of these things are millions of dollars, so we don't know, you know, when or how or what. But, um, hopefully, I, I'm very hopeful for the first time in a long time that, um, some of these things will start to get addressed. And I've talked to some of the folks who live around, um, Assawamset. And, you know, I've shared the links with them and they've reported back to me. They're like, wow, this is more than we've ever seen on this. So, um, so we have another application in for more money to actually start working on, on some of these problems. Um, so hopefully this will be good news going forward. Um, actually, last week, we were supposed to have some folks here from the state, um, to just take a peek at everything going on, but Senator Roderick's couldn't make it. So that will be rescheduled hopefully in August. Uh, but otherwise I will make sure that those links get put on the town's website so people can actually see the, um, the PDF, the, the actual slides. And they can hear any other questions on the conversation. They can actually watch the Zoom, um, meeting, the outreach meeting, the community outreach meeting.
Okay. Thanks, Leah. Um, number 10, um, if I don't have that letter. So if Leah, maybe you can read that letter or Maureen, having to do with the, um, Citizens Housing and Planning Association regarding 16, uh, Wood Edge Drive.
Yeah, I can read it, Maureen. Um, it says, uh, Dear Mr. LaCamera, this letter is sent to the town of Lakeville on behalf of Peter and Cheryl DeRocher, the current owners of an affordable property under Chapter 40B to inform you of the owner's intent to sell their affordable unit. The unit is located at 16 Woods Edge Drive and is part of Wood, Woods Edge, a Chapter 40B project for which Citizens Housing and Planning Association serves as a monitoring agent. Based on the Affordable Housing deed rider for 16 Woods Edge Drive, Chappa has determined that the maximum resale price for the above referenced unit is $198,000. As explained in the deed rider, Chappa and the homeowner have 90 days to locate an eligible purchaser for this unit. This 90-day marketing period will commence on approximately July 3rd, 2020 and end on October 1st, 2020. During this time, the town of Lakeville can elect to purchase the unit for. During this time, the town of Lakeville can elect to purchase the unit for the maximum resale price. CHAPA will assist the homeowner with the resale of this unit. When a new purchaser buys an affordable unit, a new deed restriction is signed and recorded, and the unit remains on the town of Lakeville subsidized housing inventory. If an eligible purchaser fails to buy the unit during the 90-day period, plus the option for a 60-day extension, the current owner of the property could sell the unit on the open market for the fair market value. The unit would no longer be deed restricted and therefore would no longer be counted on the town's, the town subsidized housing inventory. We welcome any efforts the town of Lakeville can offer in making potential eligible buyers aware of the unit's availability during the affordable marketing period. The owner has hired a real estate agent, June Johnson, to assist us with the resale of this property. And then it has her information. Please feel free to contact uh, the owners with any questions regarding this matter. If the town is interested in purchasing the unit on behalf of Peter and Cheryl DeRocher, we look forward to hearing back from you soon and working with you during this process. David Gasser, Program Manager from Citizens Housing and Planning Association, CHAPA.
Okay, thank you. Um, this is, uh, pretty important. This is a 55 and older development. And you're not going to find, for, uh, elderly people, $198,000. I mean, this really is a good opportunity for somebody to buy this and keep it at the lower price. But somebody has to come forward and have to meet the eligibility requirements and within 90 days. And, uh, if anybody is interested, you certainly can contact them. If not, you can contact the, uh, the Town Hall, and we will try to assist you, uh, to, uh, help you with this, uh, uh, transaction. Okay, a- anybody else? I'll set.
Yeah, I mean, if it was regular and the Council on Aging was open, I would say advertise it there. I don't know if we can put it in the newsletter. I don't know about the timing, but if anyone hears it, you know.
Well, we certainly can get it in the August newsletter, for sure.
Yep. I'll, uh, I'll reach out to Kelly and make this suggestion. It's a good one.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, moving, did you have something, Brian? You also on that?
No, I'm good. I was just looking at it on the map. Looks like a cute neighborhood.
Okay, um, to discuss and vote whether to execute, exercise, uh, Chapter 61 B, right of refusal for the purchase of the property located at 73 Howland Road. Um, this, this property was, the town was aware that this property was going to be sold back on, uh, June 11th, uh, 2019. We received a letter, you know, from the owner, and actually, town council had gotten involved and said that it was a legitimate offer and that, you know, we should do something about it. Well, the town decided, for some reason, not to exercise their right, you know, at this, at that time. So on March 10th, 2020, we got another notification from the owner asking us if we were interested in purchasing this property, uh, um, the 61B, uh, property, and I should take a step back. Um, the reason why the town is offered this is because we give them a tax break for 61A and 61B, and when they sell the property, they have to pay back the back taxes, and, um, if the town buys it, we don't get the back taxes back. But, uh, we have the first right of refusal, you know, to purchase this property. Now, this has been going on for months, and we had met an executive session, you know, um, having to do with two pieces of property, um, that are under 61A and 61B, and one of them was this piece of property, you know, with the Open Space Committee, and we said, okay, we haven't heard from you. Um, this information was given to them back in March, and they didn't do anything about it, and so forth and so on. And then they said, well, you know, let's take a look at it. Okay, so they said, all right. So then we said, okay, we're going to give you a month to look at the options, you know, to purchase, to, for the town to purchase it, or another, uh, organization to purchase it. So they, they reached out to Mass Audubon, and, um, Mass Audubon showed some interest in it, okay. And I guess the, the email that we got dated June 25th, uh, which was just about a week ago, basically said that, we're not, from Mass Audubon, we're not interested in purchasing the whole property. We're only interested in purchasing part of the property. Now, I'm not sure what that means, because they either got to purchase the whole thing, or they don't have to purchase the whole thing. And one thing that I want to say is that this property is, uh, 25 acres, and it's being subdivided into three house lots. And 30% of the 25 acres is wetlands anyways, which means the wetlands would be protected anyways. So that means that we're talking about, uh, you know, roughly, I don't know, 18 acres somewhere in that area, um, for, to purchase for $330,000, I think it was, $355,000. So if you divide, you know, the 18 acres into 355, that's, uh, pretty expensive, you know, purchased for, um, per acre. Um, anyways, so here we are, and I, I, I think it's, if the board doesn't want to make a decision tonight, that's fine, but I think this is going on a long, too, way too long. And if, if the Audubon was interested in purchasing it, they should have said, oh, we're interested in purchasing the whole lot, the whole area, not just a piece of it. And I don't know what that means.
Mr. Chair, I, I did speak with Jesse Menford, uh, today, um, just to see if he had any follow-ups um, after, after, um, the conversation, alerting him to the fact that, um, 61A, B, or straight 61 parcels, um, can't be assigned partial, um, sales. So either they buy the whole thing, or they, they buy nothing for, um, for the, for the project. Um, and he said, well, he, they still didn't give a firm answer, uh, they being the Audubon Society, on if they were interested in the whole parcel or not. So.
Well, the email, the email specifically says they're only interested in part of the property.
Yeah.
So, uh, I, i- if you want to wait until we get a further answer, but we need an answer now. I mean, this has, this has been going on for months. And the owner, you know, was trying to sell the property. The developer has already submitted the plans to the planning board and has been approved, you know, by the planning board. I don't think it's fair to these people, even though we had months to, to decide, you know, what we wanted to do.
Yeah, and then I, I did, um, talk to, um, Jesse again, and, and I stated, uh, what we had all talked about prior in one of the last meetings, saying that, um, the process should really be not only for them to identify the parcels they want to protect, but reach out to the owners of those parcels, um, and tell them ahead of time that, you know, before you sell these, please reach out and let us know. Because once it, it has got to the state, uh, the, the stage of having a purchase and sales agreement on it, we can no longer negotiate price or size or any of those things. It's either, you know, buy all of it at the price that the purchase and sales has listed, or, you know, don't buy it. So.
That's correct.
Yep, so he is aware of the board's position on that.
So I don't know what the board wants to do.
I mean, I'm kind of with you. This has been going on through June. It's not, it's not exactly fair that both the seller and the potential buyer kind of waiting on us and/or the state to make a decision. Um, as either Richard Marine just said, you know, Audubon came in and said, hey, we're interested. I'm just looking at the maps here. I mean, what was it, parcel three that really abuts the Great Cedar Swamp? I mean, the impart a two, lot two, lot three?
Yes.
I, I just don't like people waiting endlessly with no finite date in mind. I don't think that's fair to them.
Well, yeah, you have an opinion, or?
Um, my only opinion is I'd like to see this not happen again. So, um, I'd like to see us, you know, I know Maureen and Tracy have been working on a process so that we're, we don't get into a situation like this, but, I mean, I kind of feel bad. I know the developers put in, you know, um, a lot of money so far, and the, you know, the seller is waiting. Um, and I, I, I sort of think that if the Mass Audubon or Fisheries and Wildlife wanted it, they would have said right away, you know, we want it. Um, I just don't want the folks who sit on the open space to feel like, you know, we're not hearing their message, because we are. Um, the open space is, you know, very important to me too, but I just think we need to, you know, there was another issue last year about, um, other property that came out of 61A. And I just feel like we need to tighten up our whole internal processing on that, so that this doesn't happen again. And like I said, I, I, I know Maureen and Tracy are, you know, working on a policy, so hopefully they'll have that, they'll be able to present that to us sooner than later, so that way we don't get into this kind of a situation again.
We're, we're almost two months from now. This PNS had been signed a year ago.
Right.
So, Brian, point of clarification, Mr. Chair, if you don't mind. Um, the, the PNS wasn't part of the original package that came in a year ago. And then, um, it was decided by the owner to pull it, because she didn't want to pay the fees herself. And she, yes, so she pulled it and then waited for the purchase and sales.
Okay.
Uh, on that, so, so yes, she had pulled it hers, herself until, um, her lawyer had got all the documents in order, and then that happened this winter, at where, whichever date that Rich had said, March or.
Gotcha. Thanks for the history there.
Well, the, Brian's right, the purchase and sale agreement is dated September 24th, 19.
Yeah, but they didn't submit it to us until, yeah, yeah, because, yeah, she submitted it sometime in June originally, and then she didn't have all the documentation to submit it, and then decided to pull it back and, and waited, so.
Okay, has the have this, has the seller indicated they're, you know, looking for a decision quickly? I mean, what's, what's their temperature? Do we know? Do we, does it matter at this point?
Um, I have not talked to the seller. I know Tracy has, um, spoken to the seller. Um, I, I, I didn't hear one way or another if this was, uh, pushing an urgency or not, but I, I would say, you know, as to the length of time, it, because of COVID-19, it's not completely unreasonable, but if it's, if it's a question of us just waiting and waiting for something that's not going to happen, seems kind of unreasonable.
Well, the, the, the first question is, is the, uh, is the town interested in purchasing it for $355,000?
Yeah.
So, I mean, if we decide that we want to purchase it, then we have to find $355,000. So as selectmen, we can, you know, we can.
Which means that we have to go to town meeting.
Right.
You know, and get it approved, and, you know, that's another few months.
Right, so that, you know, even if we have a fall town meeting in September, October, that's putting another four months on this whole, you know, um.
True.
Yeah, I, you know, um.
I mean, I, I don't think the town should buy it. That's me.
You know, a- a- again, at.
I, I think, I think that for the 25 acres, and seven or eight of it is wetlands, to pay $355,000 for 18 acres of land, um, I don't see any value to the town.
Right, I mean, the 18, the, the seven or eight acres itself is not developable, so that's going to remain as open space.
Correct.
So, I mean, we're still.
I mean, not just that, but then whatever setbacks are there is also going to be untouchable.
See, if, if, if we had approached the owner, if Open Space had approached the owner prior to the purchase and sale agreement, then you could have negotiated a price. We can only take it or leave it at the $355,000. We can't negotiate anything.
Right. Right. Well, I know a lot of folks won't be happy with me, but, um, I have to do what I think is right at this point. Um, I'm going to make a motion that we refuse to purchase the property located at 73 Howland Road. Um, that has come out of 61A, that the town has the right of first refusal.
I'll second that. I'm, I'm with you there. Any, any further discussion?
Um, I, you know, even by making the motion, it doesn't in any way, shape or form mean that I'm not in favor of trying to preserve some open space. I mean, Maureen and, Maureen and I have sat down and said, oh, we have a little bit here, and we have a little bit there. We've gone through where.
Putting pieces together forever.
I mean, where, you know, we, we, we actually look at that, but I, I think, again, going back to my original comment, I think we just need to find a better way to sort of streamline, you know, this process. Even though this process started with a different, what a selectman and a different town administrator, if the process itself had been sound, then we should have, the new folks could have just transitioned in. So I, I'm, you know, kind of putting, putting the onus here on Maureen and Tracy to work on that, um, that whole policy.
And that's okay, and, uh, pardon me if I can interrupt, and, and that's okay. You know, we, we'd love to have a policy. Uh, there's one I, I had saw that I think we should model ours off, off of, so some of the heavy lifting's already been done on that. But, um, to just reiterate, like, my point from earlier, um, if, if Open Space really wants to affect change, they have to do it before it gets to the stage where it gets to us. Um, if they want to get in and make those, those relationships with the home, uh, with the parcel owners ahead of time. You know, it's great that they've identified areas that they're concerned about and think would be great, but you can't stop at that. You, you have to push through, and then also build those relationships with Audubon and the Wildlife Conservancy and, and Fish and Game, and, and all of those possible buyers of, of land. Um, and, and to do that, um, you, you need to have, you need to have that in place before any of this happens, because time is of the essence, and we don't want to be, like you said, denying people the right to, to move forward and, and be able to sell their property, um, because maybe we're not as organized as we should be.
And, um, again, I, uh, I appreciate everyone's efforts. Um, but in the same respect, I think we need to put a little bit more, give them open space, a little bit more support, so I'll sort of sign up to, uh, to work on that with Jesse. I know Jesse is very passionate. Um, and I, you know, I don't know if there's trainings for them out there, or if maybe we can just find some people that we can talk to on the way that it used to be done or something, so, so I'll, I'll try to work on that with them.
All right, all those in favor?
Baby and I.
Hey, I.
Uh, LaCamera, I. Okay, uh, going on to number 13, um, discuss and vote to accept the resignation of Janice Swanson from the Zoning Board of Appeals. Can somebody make a motion to, um, accept her resignation?
Um, I make a motion that we accept Janice Swanson's resignation from the Zoning Board of Appeals.
Second motion?
Yeah, any discussion?
Yeah, we just need to work on, uh, getting our appointments in order, but otherwise.
Okay, all those in favor?
Baby and I.
Hey, I.
Uh, LaCamera, I. Okay, um, the next item is to discuss the draft appointment list for 2020. Um, I think what we need to do here is, um, each board member should, you know, look at this list, and, um, there is a policy that's in place that already exists, and if you want to review that policy, and then we can make changes to that policy. But, um, unfortunately, uh, a lot of these appointments are done on July 31st, and in the future, we really need to do these. And in the future, we really need to do these, address these issues a lot earlier, so we have time to discuss it. So does any board member want to say anything about that?
Well, I know, Mr. Chair, before COVID nineteen, you and I had discussed. We were also very sure we were going to get to work on these appointments earlier, but unfortunately, you know, that changed. I, the ones that are here right at the front on the cover page that we have. These are the ones that are up currently, correct?
Grab my article.
What I was looking for was the, I thought we were going to reorganize some of the selectmen's ones too, but maybe that's going to be done at a later date.
So if I have it correctly, we wanted to not actually make the vote today, but maybe Rick.
No, we don't want to make any vote today.
Just wanted to discuss the process.
Right.
If I may, Mr. Chair, I mean, having just had an opportunity to go through the existing policy. I think it's at least worth going through and see if we have any ideas and how perhaps it could be improved in the future. It looks like, and if I misspeak, please correct me, it looks like the current process is anybody who would like to be reappointed gets that opportunity to make that request ahead of the at-large folks being able to say, hey, I might like to participate in a board, but if every board member wants a reappointment, it makes it a bit tougher for somebody perhaps that wants to get involved to get involved. And, you know, we don't all know everybody in town. So if, if there's an opportunity to get a resume, some other information about the person besides a letter that says I'd love to participate, that might go a long way. Obviously, we're very limited on time with what's been going on, so I don't know if those are things we even want to discuss and consider changing now, or just food for thought down the road.
Well, I agree with you. I think that we really should publicize that we are looking for people to serve on various committees. You know, and if they are interested, you know, please send in your email or a letter saying, you know, I'd like to be considered to be put on X, you know, committee and depending upon the opening, you know, on that committee or I mean, a lot of these committees have associate members too, Brian. And you see some of them have quite a few of them, some of the committees, which is a different issue. But yeah, I think that we really only got a few weeks left here to try to, it ends on the thirty first. But we do know that there is an opening on the planning board, you know, which we're taking any names up until the eighth. We now have an opening on the Board of Appeals because of Janice's resignation. So if anybody is interested in submitting their name to be considered to be put on the zoning board of appeals, I mean, that, that's available, you know, as well. I believe that we also have an opening on the conservation commission, if I'm not mistaken, Maureen.
Open space and cable TV advisory committees.
And conservation has one too, right?
Um, I thought we.
They have one expiring in twenty twenty two from this list, unless there's another one.
I thought there was somebody else that wasn't going to, maybe, maybe I'm wrong.
It's open space. It's open space. Yeah.
So there is committees that are available, so, you know, if, if anybody is interested, you know, in serving on some of these committees, please, please submit your name.
Yeah. Um, for me, I, I do have a question about the associate members. I imagine associate members may have been, I'm guessing now, may have been brought in because perhaps attendance wasn't great for other members and that way they could, you know, still do business, but I, I'm not quite sure. I think we need to look at some of the associate members. I think, I don't know, we had an issue last year where, you know, as the board of selectmen, we appointed someone to a committee and then we left it up to that committee to determine who was going to be the associate and who was going to be the full-time member. And I'm like, this just sounds kind of, you know, silly. So I, I guess I, I, I should look up what the history is of having these associate members.
So I, I asked the same question, Leah, last year when you and I had talked about it, because we were both learning. Associate members, and the answer I was given was to get these members up to speed so they could be considered to be full members at some point. Because the work that they were doing was involved and complex, and they wanted people to be able to sit in and understand what was going on prior to them being ever considered for an appointment. So it was like a waiting room, basically.
But then one would guess that it should go by seniority, and that's where some of the problems was someone was an associate member and someone who hadn't. So then it become, it became politics, so.
And then, you know, the, the amount of associate members became unruly and, you know, in all of those things, but yes, I, I, I remember the conversation well.
Right, and associate members can't necessarily vote, so if you still don't have, you know, the full member there in the quorum, you still can't get business done, even though you might have had seven people show up, so. I, you know, I, I understand the whole associate member thing, but Brian's new, he's all caught up.
Brian.
Associate selectman.
You know, so.
Well, I do, I do think too that when we go through that appointment list, that there's a number of associates on some of these committees that haven't attended any meetings.
Right.
At all, and they should not be reappointed.
Yeah, and I, I know, again, going back to some politics and some of these, you know, committees, I know some people were willing to step up, but yet they, you know, other people were promoted from the associate position, so. Then, you know, someone drops off who was a really good and, you know, participating member. So I think we need to sort of clear that up and, and specify. If that's the reason, then, then it should go by seniority when there's an opening, you know, so. So I don't know if we can do that this year, or if it's going to have to wait until next year, but I would, I would just like to make sure we all think about that.
Yeah, okay, we, go ahead, Brian. We had a comment here and Brian wants to respond to it.
Yeah, so Nora Klein asked, I had mentioned earlier, you know, it'd be nice if we had better ways to know people applying, whether it was a resume or some other information. And she asked, you know, why not provide a questionnaire to fill out instead of just a resume and that. Fine, any idea like that, the, my choice of using the word resume was just more along the lines of like, how can we learn more about you? Why is it that you're passionate about joining this board, this committee? What, what do you think you bring to the table? Maybe what, what are some things you've seen them do you'd like to change if you were there in the past? So whether it's a questionnaire, survey, resume, five hundred, you know, word essay. I just think it's worth going back and say, you know, how could we alter the process to make it easier for everybody and, and, and more open to other folks?
Okay, moving along. Anybody else? All set? Okay, number fifteen, request for reappointment of Ian Daly. So I'm going to take a motion to appoint Eden Daly as a constable. He's been a constable in the past.
So moved?
Can I just amend that to reappointed? If reappointed, his term would expire July twenty fifth, twenty twenty one.
No problem.
Okay, so I'll second that.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Baby and I.
Day, I.
La camera, I. Okay. Discuss renewal of earth removal permits. We have received some earth removal permits. What I would like to do is we have the earth removal policy. And there's been some recommended changes for, God, eighteen months?
Couple of years, yep.
And so I would like us to review that and put it on the next agenda, so we can vote to revise the earth removal permit before we renew these permits.
Does everyone have a copy of the bylaw?
I do.
Yes.
Let me see. Did, I think I gave it to you last week, Leah, probably Thursday or Wednesday by email.
Think I have a copy of the original and the one with the suggested draft changes?
Yep.
Yep. Yes, I have that. I'm just looking to see if these, these permits will expire, if that matters.
So technically, we were supposed to do these in March, but because of COVID nineteen, they extended it out, so.
Okay, yeah, um, yeah, I agree with you, Rich, that, I've been looking at that for a year and that definitely needs to.
Okay, let's work on that.
So we'll just table this.
Okay.
Do we need to get back to the, the applicants in any way, or are they just kind of extended for now, or? How do we want to handle that?
I believe that they were automatically extended, but you need to check with Nate, Maureen.
I will check.
There's a certain number of days when the state of emergency is lifted. And it certainly hasn't been lifted yet, so I believe that the permits are still in place.
Forty-five days after lifting the state of the emergency before constructive approval would be on or.
Just want to make sure we weren't hanging them out there, that's all. Thank you.
Okay, number eighteen is a renewal of the, an auto storage permit for the property located at one Fern Avenue. According to the zoning enforcement officer, Nate, he's reviewed it and he doesn't have any problem with renewing this permit, so if somebody could make a motion to that effect.
Um, I'll make a motion to renew the automobile storage permit for the property located at one Fern Avenue, and that perm, new permit would expire on June seventh, twenty twenty one.
I'll second that motion.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Baby and I.
Day, I.
La camera, I. Number nineteen is to discuss the request from the planning board permit for the board's recommendations regarding a definitive subdivision plan for Bella Way. Okay. I don't know about you guys, but I tried to look at the plans online and they're not very easy to look at because they're so all the lettering and everything is so small. We have got to work with the planning board. And, and they, they want to discuss this. They want our comments for the meeting of July ninth, which is this Thursday. Now, this goes to the selectmen, goes to the, goes to planning board, the open space, conservation, border health. We need to change this process. In honor for us, three of us, or any of the other boards, because some of these boards are certainly not going to even be meeting this week to be able to look at the plans and make their comments. This process needs to be changed. And we need to talk to the chairman of the, the planning board, because we, we need at least two weeks. You know, once we get these plans, I mean, it's just not great.
Mr. Chair, we've already asked them for that. We had the same situation over the winter with Island Terrace, I believe, where we got, you know, a couple hours before our meeting, we ended up getting it. So we asked for more time, so I think it has to do with their internal processes and what they're asking from the, from the people that apply too. So maybe they could look at that, that whole start process where they're asking for the plans and, and who gets the plans and, and how they get delivered and how long that they're going to be answering them, just.
Well, we just got, we just got the plans on Wednesday or Thursday, you know. For, for them to make comments, for us to make comments on that. And these are important things, you know, that we need to, we need to address. So if you want, I mean, I'm glad they reach out to the Mark Knox, who's the chairman, and see if we can, you know, improve this process, because I can assure you that none of the other boards that receive these plans are going to review that this week because they don't have meetings.
I will say that, you know, the, the, the meetings that I went to in person, the meetings for the planning board that I've watched, I think some of their own members would like to have things a little sooner than they get them. But not, not for anything, Rich, and I know you probably can't see this, I have the actual paper copy. I still need almost a magnifying glass to read it, so it's not easy stuff to read and I don't want to miss anything. So, you know, we, they, they have to, I, let's try to work with Mark, I guess, and see if.
All right, I'll reach out to Mark.
Okay.
But I don't have any comments right now, because I, I even, I looked at it online and I, I can't, you know.
Yeah, I don't have any comments either, other than, you know, this is so small that, and, and, and I can still pass the up close vision.
Okay, I guess, I guess send an email to, to Mark Knox saying thank you for the plan, but we're unable to review it as, on the, on the, on the, on the the, the dates that you have requested us to make our comments, and we will look at it further.
And I agree with your sentiments, Mr. Chair. I'm hesitant to make any comment because this is when things get missed, when, when anything tries to rush through a response back. And with the number of boards involved here, we don't want to be rushing things through in the middle of a holiday week either.
Right, I mean, I do know from being at a couple of their meetings that they're getting things sometimes last minute from, you know, the people that are, have hearings or whatever it is, the people that are going before the planning board. I, I mean, they know that they, some of those people need to be able to give them a better, more time, so let's work with Mark.
But Leah, this is a public hearing.
Right.
Had to be put in the newspaper at least two weeks ago, because it has to be in the paper. Why weren't we, all the boards, giving the same plans at that time?
Right.
If they, if the developer, and I'm picking on this developer.
Right.
You know, doesn't have the plans available for review before it's advertised, it should not be advertised.
Right, and then, you know, and if it's our, if it's an internal problem, then we need to address that with the planning board as well.
Yeah, no, we're trying to improve the process here. We're not criticizing, we're not criticizing the planning board, but, you know, we have to fix this problem, because this is a problem anyways. Moving on, new business. We, one of the other things that, you know, the fall town meeting is probably going to come across, come across on us quickly. Because if we have to make any budget adjustments or whatever, so what I think we need to do is notify the planning board now, because they have to have public hearings and posted and all that stuff. If there's anything that they want to put on the fall time meeting, they better get going, because, you know, I mean, if we're going to have it in September, maybe, you know, two and a half months goes by very quickly.
Mr. Chair, if I may, I spoke with our town accountant and he cautioned me against having a September meeting for the sake of free, not only free cash, but how late the budget process is going, and he recommended that it would be mid to late October for our town meeting, so I just wanted to make sure you were aware.
No, that's fine, but I mean, if the, if the planning board is working on any zoning articles, you know, let's not wait till the last minute, because you got to make the changes, you got to have town council review it, it's got to be reviewed by the boards, it's got to be reviewed by the board of selectmen, it's got to be referred back to the planning board. And there's public hearings, so that period of time goes by very, very quickly.
Mr. Chair, should we put that on our next agenda to set the date for the fall town meeting?
I think that's too early, you know. We, we don't want to set it, we don't want to set a date if the town accountant feels uncomfortable, you know, right now, and without knowing what's going on at the state level.
He's just hoping for a budget before he, before he says to go.
All right. Okay, has anybody else got anything in new business?
I do. I have transfers for end of year cleanup. I sent that on to you this morning. Did you receive that? So I had three transfers here for end of year cleanup issues on the budget. If you want me to read them out loud, I will. We had one for, for fire overtime, and the money was taken out of police salaries where we had an overage where we hadn't hired, promoted a lieutenant. where we had an overage where we hadn't hired a, promoted a lieutenant. Um, we have one for an increase in property liability insurance that wasn't in the budget. Um, and then we had an overage in employee benefits and group health insurance. Oh, I'm sorry, and that was, this one's seventy-five hundred dollars, um, the last one was twenty thousand dollars. Um, and then we had one more, uh, which is three parts, and it's for the inspectional services for the gas, plumbing, and electrical inspector, um, for ten thousand two forty, and that would be taken out of the technology maintenance agreements where we had a surplus of ten thousand two forty.
Okay, are these all the transfers that need to be done?
So far, so um, then he might have some more, but he needs to get them in by the fifteenth of um, of July, so it, just in the off chance that this is the only one, um, the, the finance committee is trying to see if they can meet next Monday, and they would like to vote on it. So I was hoping that we could get a preliminary vote and then ratify this, so we could move forward with these changes if they're the only ones.
Okay, so is the fifteenth is not next Monday, right, thirteenth?
Thirteenth is next Monday, correct.
Uh, so, is town accountant going to have everything available for the thirteen?
So he, he's hoping to have it this week if he has anything, but things just seem to pop up, you know, last minute that we, you know, every year where we're, we're having a couple um, overages here and, and, and being under there. So he was hoping it would be done this week for him.
Uh, doesn't it, doesn't it make sense then that we do this jointly with the finance committee?
Um, you, you can, but um, there's no statute that says you have to do it jointly, and I was just trying to make it as expeditious as possible. So if you want to wait, that's fine, but um, I just didn't want you guys to have to schedule a meeting if you didn't need to.
But there, there could be more changes coming, we don't know.
There could be.
Yeah.
And, and our next meeting is until the twentieth, correct, as of now?
So we would have to schedule an additional meeting to get it done, and why I wanted to try to get ahead of it if at all possible, but we don't know if there's a, a few more that haven't come across yet, so.
Alright, I mean, I don't have any problem doing the transfers, but I have this funny feeling that we're going to be meeting jointly with the finance committee next week.
If, if we voted today, would we not have to schedule another meeting anyways to ratify the vote?
Ratify it.
Yeah, you would ratify it, but you'd still be able to move forward with it.
Oh, without the ratification?
It's just, it's a, well, let me see, yeah, it would just have to be ratified and be formality.
The what?
The, the ratification.
We have to vote on it.
Yep, no, but I was saying, it, it, the next meeting on the twentieth, we'd have to ratify the vote, because it was in new business.
I just didn't know if Todd could move, because you said Todd had a deadline of the fifteenth?
He did have a deadline of the fifteenth.
But I didn't know if it sounded like, even if we voted today, were we going to have to call another meeting before the fifteenth anyways to ratify?
Hmm, no, not to ratify.
Okay.
I'm confused, I think you just said, I think you just said that we have to revote it.
We would have to ratify it only for the fact that it's brought up in new business as opposed to being an item on the agenda.
Okay, and when are you going to do that?
At the twentieth meeting.
But you need it done by the fifteenth.
Yeah, so the question is, can Todd go forward without the ratification, and I don't think he can. So if that's the, I don't know if he, I, you know what, I, I would say no, but if that's the case, I think it would be better for us just to plan a meeting in three days, post it, and make the decisions there. Anyone else?
I'm just looking at my calendar, I was going to say I'd set the thirteenth aside if we did want to meet with FinCom and do it all at the same time. If two days is enough for Todd to turn around and do what he needs to do.
I'm just curious if he can go forward.
I'm texting him.
You should already be watching right now, why is there another comment coming in?
Okay, well, uh, while we're waiting for Todd to respond, if he is going to respond, is there anything else on new business?
Um, I actually have a couple, th- three things, Rich. Um, the first one is, I, you know, with this whole open space and everything, I know the Community Preservation Act has failed at town meeting. I don't know if there's any interest by my fellow selectmen to try it again. Just a suggestion, Brian, if you want to, you know, I don't know if you know much about it.
Is, is that the one with the minor tax bump that goes into a certain fund?
Yeah, yep, I mean, you know, I'm just saying with all this open space stuff and then looking for the money, I just figured I would put it out there as a reminder, I'm, you know, not saying it has to be on the next, at the next town meeting, but just a reminder that it's out there. Um, the other things, I have questions for Maureen, so I know she's waiting to hear back from Todd, but.
You have my undivided attention.
Um, what is our department head's schedule looking like, department head meeting schedule looking like?
Nine thirties, oh, nine thirties, nine thirty on Fridays. Um, the, we didn't have it because it was a holiday last Friday, so no one was in.
So is the intention to still continue doing weekly meetings?
Through the time that we can't really meet in person, um, believe it or not, I would have to say nine out of the ten people that attend are excited to do it in this format, because they're able to stay in their office or, you know, or get something done i- in between instead of having to stop what they're doing. Um, and they like re- meeting more frequently than, you know, the once a month that um, I was doing. So I might want to evaluate doing, you know, one Zoom meeting and then one in-person meeting a month when we start regular, but the intention, my intention is to continue this um, particular uh, staff meeting on Fridays through uh, the end of August.
Okay, I'm, I agree with you, I think the one department head meeting, it almost seems like things either go not discussed, because it's just a month old in some cases.
Yeah, I agree.
And, you know, I think two meetings a month is, and actually, I, I would agree with you, you know, because people can sit in their office and whatever, but um, I, I've heard from a couple people and they say, you know, I know they're not technic, they're, you know, attendance is strongly suggested, but with vacations coming up and everything, I just, you know, don't want any department head to feel like, you know, they're, they're like skipping school.
Yeah.
If they, you know, have something on there.
And I, um, and I let the department heads that couldn't attend, I let someone go in their place. Um, so like for Debbie, she couldn't attend, and I had her have Paula attend. And that way, if we had some type of announcement, it still got to where it needed to go, you know, and, and they could still participate. Because I, I just think it's important to have, because we're not spending that much face-to-face time any longer, and it's important to have that interaction. Um, lots of things have come up where, you know, someone will be giving a rundown of something they're doing, and then someone else will be like, oh, you know what, I have something for that, let me give that to you, so it, it's got extreme value.
Yeah, um, my other suggestion was exactly that, if like the second-in-command maybe, because, you know, I, I do, I have gotten a couple of calls saying, oh, well, you know, the department head meeting every Friday. Not that people are complaining, I want you to know that they're not complaining, but.
Fifth retribution.
Um, maybe sometimes, you know, if they could send like their second, I think it would be beneficial to, for, you know, like the second person, and, you know, I agree, we have to stay on top of information. And, you know, those first three to five weeks of COVID nineteen were quite, you know, um, what I, just, we didn't know what was going on, it was kind of scary, it was, you know, all the unknowns. Um, but, you know, I was just curious how long you were going to do the, go through every, every week, but.
Um, I just figured through August would be per, um, important, because we just don't know what phase and change and things that are going on, and again, you know, especially for Kelly and Jamie, they feel isolated from the rest of us, really. Yeah, so having them have a voice and be able to, you know, be part of what's going on, I think is important to keep everyone, you know, together as a team.
Okay, and then, uh, go ahead.
No, do you have something else?
Um, well, I was going to ask about the tent that we have on order, but if no one else wants to talk about it, I will defer and talk to Maureen person, myself, but um, I didn't know the tent that we've got on order, if we could get some information on that, I couldn't open everything up on my phone, so.
Um, uh, you know what, I can print that out for you if, um, if you're having trouble viewing it. But it gave all the specifics on the tent, the measurements, the pole placement.
Okay, um, and I just, you know, I, I just know that there used to be a tent at the Parks Department.
There's.
That didn't end up well.
Oh, um, they've had two tents out front for the Parks Department for as long as I can remember, they're out there all summer long. Um, I know because I sit under them while my, my girls are at cheer, um, to ward off the mosquitoes. I've spent a couple hundred hours under those tents, so yeah, I know that they do have two of them.
Um, I just, you know, I know that you, the, you know, Kelly wants to use them for the COA, and, you know, that's all great, but um, I just, and I know, you know, I just feel like I have to say these things that everyone already knows. Um, outside isn't always great for the, you know, seniors, because it could be too hot for them, it could be too cold for them, and I know we're trying to, you know, to reopen things and, um, you know, but I, I don't want someone getting bit by a bee, I don't want someone falling over. I know that those tents, like in the case of last week with the, that storm that came up, we would not have had time to take that tent down, so I, I just really want there to be a lot of supervision if that's the way that we're going to go forward with that tent.
Okay, um, I can give you s- specifics after, I don't have, I'm open on the screen, but I can give you all the specifics.
Yeah, I just couldn't open everything up on my phone, well, and see it, so.
And I did um, consult with uh, Nate Darling on that, and um, she actually did change the model of the tent she was thinking of, um, and we made sure all the, the fire uh, ratings and um, all the specificities that Nate was concerned about were, were met before the purchase. Um, because you're, you're right, some of these tents are just not great for much.
Yeah, there's all different qualities and.
Yep.
You know, um, but that, and, and this brings me to my last piece of uh, new business, Rich. I'm sorry for holding everyone up here, but, so, again, I've been around for about a year, and um, I, I'm not quite sure, I know that each department head has a budget, and they're all really good with their budgets, but sometimes these purchases are like bigger purchases for, it doesn't matter, you know, I, I'll use the COA just as an example, so, you know, Kelly needed this tent, whatever. Um, what is the process on like, capital projects are over?
Ten thousand.
Dollars, you know, um, I know like last year with the library, the copier machine that, you know, Jamie thought would, would be best, didn't fit in the capital projects, but, you know.
Money in the IT budget, so we could.
Right, right. So, so is there, you know, a process by which, I, I guess, I mean, did we buy the best tent that money can buy? I mean, I don't know who's doing the purchasing here.
Well, um, it's uh, under procurement rules, we're, we're well under the threshold at, I think it was sixteen hundred and tax for that purchase, and it was not a pu- uh, purchase out of the town's budget. It didn't come out of the town's um, free cash, it didn't come out of the town's budget, um, it came out of grant money. Um, grant money that had been left over from um, two projects that came in well under budget, and the way the grant money works for the, it's, it's called the um, the formula grant money from the state. Kelly applies for it every year as a grant, um, and it comes up for a multitude of uses, um, that she can use it for. Um, and then she has to spend it all by the end of June, it doesn't roll over into the next year. Um, she became, I, I don't know when she became aware or when she noticed it, but a few days before the end of the, of the year, she had come to me with the, the project, and I said, well, let's run this by the Board of Health and by Nate first before we go for it, um, because honestly, that's her, that I don't really have, I don't know, I, I won't say I have, I don't have say over it, I absolutely have say, and she would, she would listen to me, but as far as, it's not a budget item, so this is under purr, purview.
I think I'm more concerned with, um, you know, we had some purchases of antibacterial things. They didn't end up being the right thing, I guess my question is, at what point does a department head say, okay, I need advice from someone else to make sure what I'm buying is the right thing for, you know, like, for example, if, I don't know, if, well, Jamie would have the Board of Trustees, I guess.
Yeah.
But, yeah, it just like, you, you know, if some, if, let's use Jamie, for example, if she decided they needed a new refrigerator there for, you know, um, she could, I guess, just go to Lowe's and buy a refrigerator, but I mean, this, you know.
It would depend how much her budget was, and if she allocated the money for it in the budget process. And usually, if it was a big purchase that she knew was coming up, she would let me know ahead of time. But like emergency purchases, they usually reach out to me if they're having an emergency, like Franklin had. Um, one of his um, oil wa- waste burners go down, wait, was it oil waste burner, something like that, go down. Um, and it was not during the time that, you know, we would have allocated it for, and we had to make kind of a split emergency decision, you know, to purchase it, but he does reach out. But they do include me in anything that they think would be bigger or controversial, but it's usually a discussion that we have when we talk about their budgets for the year.
Yeah, I mean, like with, and I'm just trying to, to, you know, like with this tent, you know, and I just happen to know a lot about this, because I've done a lot of stuff with my church about it. Uh, you know, just because the money's there doesn't mean that same person is the one to make the, the decision. Like, at what point would they reach out to Nate and say, what do you think, for example, a shed, let's say a shed. I, I mean, if someone needs a shed, they could just go order a shed, but, uh, you know.
It, it really falls under how much expertise the person has in that area and how much they've done it before, like, I would be loathe to tell Nate where he should buy a shed, or how he should do it.
Well, I guess that's my point, my point is, you know, how do some of these department heads, would they reach out to him as the facilities person, is, can I be assured that Nate is, you know?
So a lot of times they'll reach out to me, and I will direct them to who they should be vetting things by and, and talking to. And in this instance, it was Nate and Ed, and um, John, uh, JK, Oliveri Insurance, just to be sure that we're, you know, following what we need to, so.
Just hate to see money wasted buying the wrong thing and then still needing to buy the right thing, that's all.
Yes, agreed, agreed, and we avoid that, um, and whenever possible, but sometimes they just ship the wrong thing too, so.
Okay, alright, sorry, Rich, I'm done.
Okay, anybody else, Brian, you all set?
I'm perfectly good, thank you.
Um, old business, uh, we kind of gave an update on the Lakeville Hospital already. Um, one of the things that I, I would like to um, stress is that, you know, we are available to answer any questions that you have about the project. So if there's misinformation out there and um, on social media, all you have to do is send us a email or call the office, and one of us will gladly get back to you and talk to you about it, so please. Um, uh, if you have a question and you can't get an answer, just give us a call. Um, as far as the sale of the Lakeville Country Club, I'm still in the same status mode, I have, we have no update on uh, what's going on, you know, at this point, you know, with that particular purchase. Anybody else got the old business?
Ri- Richard, just can I ask you a question, is that basically we're stuck at the potential back taxes portion?
Uh, we're waiting for them to get back to us, yes.
Okay.
Anything else on old business?
No, sir.
Okay. Okay. Any other business that want to come before the board tonight? Okay. All right. So I'm sorry the meeting was so long, but we've got to get some of these things going and, and. We had to discuss a lot of these things. So the next meeting, I'll make sure it's not as long. Just talking about the agenda. As you know, what we did was we tried to get out the preliminary agenda on Tuesday. Give you the chances, board, to review that and then add any agenda items that you want to add, you know, to the agenda. So, I mean, I saw a couple of emails. Be specific and say, okay, I want this on the agenda. Okay. So we're all on the same page. All right. So other than that, we all set. I intend a motion to adjourn.
We moved.
I will second that.
Okay, any discussion? No discussion on those.
Baby and I.
Day, I.
The camera, I.
Have a good night, everybody.
Bye, everybody. Thank you. Okay.